Also, does that feed into that same machine? Oh, it's real tonight. So that was one of the things I believe in. This way. Yeah, I think.
Oh, 'cause he's testing. He hasn't put them out there, so I'll make this guy check. Somebody walking by and they can see him, you know. I just wanted to make sure it was working.
Okay.[39.78][39.92](noise)
(noise)
I'm sorry, ooh, that looks good.
I'm good. I would like these to get, I didn't like the unseated. Each one of them, our email messages, straight to him, and I hope that's enough, Paul. Oh, he won't be. Actually, I have anxiety, so it helps me with mine, so it's stressful, so.
One for multiple.
I don't know, I'm debating it. Hey, how are you?
We have all, we have all the titles.
Hey, man.
You're in that thing, you know, so I'd love to catch up with you. Just go over it.
Ready to test me? Oh, don't, okay. Got him.
Hi, Mayor. Mayor?
Oh, how are you?
Okay, good, how are you? You're, we've got you on, they haven't started yet, um. Uh, let's see.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
And he called in.
No, he's still there. Daniel.
Oliver, twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, yeah. If you're under twenty-five.
Mr. Rickaman.
It really does. It's reflecting twenty-five hundred.
If you're twenty-five. She, where?
Over to your right. Off into Dana. Up in the back. Here she come up front.
Oh, okay. Yo.
Or do you put their names?
No, I think it'd be easier. More streamlined if you just get them all on one line. I think that would suffice.
So just Mary Stephen Cape and Nancy Councilor.
Grown some hair.
Hey, there. How are you? Very good, thank you. Oh, he not here? He's only three. He's, we'll be three next month.
I gotta be careful.
So, yeah, no, none in school.
Hey, how you doing?
Y'all ready?
All right.
All right, Ms. Wiley.
Let me know when you meet.
There we go.
Good evening, everybody. Ms. Hammond, if you would read the roll, please.
Certainly, Mr. Brennan.
Present.
Mr. Rickaman.
Here.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mayor Benjamin. Steve, say here.
Present.
All right. Thank you, guys. The mayor is unavailable to be physically here, but he is with us on the phone. So he will be joining us. We have a full council. So if we would start with the invocation. Reverend McDowell, if you would please do the honors.
Ladies' by our heads. For this day and for all that you've done for us, for the blessings you've touched us individually with, even though it's chilly and cold outside, we pray that the winds of your spirit might warm us internally, sensitize us to the needs of our city. And as we move forward, we pray that your grace and your mercy be with us. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen. Okay. Do we have? Oh, we have a Boy Scout troop. Would you gentlemen do us the honors in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Come on down.
Yo, come right here to Ms. Wilson. Right over here.
State of America. We're the family. We're the staff. One nation under God. In the very essence. That's what it is, that's a for all.
Thank you. Before you guys sit, before you guys sit down, if one of you could just tell us what troop you're from? Y'all come.
We're from Troop 100, St. Joseph's.
Well, thank you. Welcome, welcome. We're glad to have you guys here. Okay. Ms. Wilson? City Council discussion items?
Um, yes, ma'am. At this time, we would ask for council to adopt the agenda as outlined.
So move.
It's been properly moved by Reverend McDowell, seconded by, is that Mr. Davis? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vaughn?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Madam Mayor, pro tem. At this time, I would ask for any public input related to the items on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there any? Seeing none, and I don't have a list, but I don't see any. Ms. Wilson, go on to approval minutes?
Yes, ma'am. Council is asked to approve the December 17th, 2019, and January 7th, 2020 city council meeting minutes.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Duval. Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vaughn?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Items seven through thirteen make up the consent agenda. I know Mr. Rickaman may have a question about item nine. Is that?
I did. I just, I.
Daniel, pull your mic down.
Yeah, I'd like to hold number nine and just talk about it after the consent agenda.
Sure. At this time, we would ask for council to approve the consent agenda items seven and eight and ten through thirteen.
Is there a motion?
We'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Probably moved by Mr. McDuval, Mr. McDowell, seconded by Mr. Duval. Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vaughn?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item nine. Council is asked to approve a contract for the construction renovation outfit of the Emergency Operations Center as requested by Support Services, awarded to Quintech Solutions, Inc., a small and minority-owned business enterprise in an amount not to exceed $681,770.63. This firm is located in Somerville, South Carolina, with various outlined, small and woman-owned business enterprises, other small businesses, and other subcontractors as noted.
Mr. Rickaman?
Yeah, I just, I'm supportive of it. I'm moving it forward. You know, it's great that we're able to keep the business in state, but I'd really like us to try to look at figuring out a way that we can make sure we tap every source locally. I mean, a lot of this work should be able to be done locally with people within the city limits. And, and, you know, we've done, had such great strides with small and minority-owned businesses. And I just, I hope we can figure out a way that we can use our OBO and other offices to help people fill the void so we can have more respondents from within the city.
Yes, sir. I was explaining to Mr. Rickaman that in this instance, local preference didn't apply because of the difference in the amount of the bids. It was well over five percent different, difference. And so, you know, that didn't apply this time. But I do understand that concern about local businesses or keeping the money local.
This, is, is there something in the guideline that wouldn't let us do a bit more in terms of local preference? Does it? I don't know if it hinders in this case or it helps down the road, but I totally agree with that. You know, I'd still try to keep as much money here than watching it go down I-20 or 95.
Yes, sir. And certainly, I think this council has done a phenomenal job of supporting the programs as far as boosting our small minority women-owned businesses. As you can see here, the subs, many of them are in that, those categories, and are local. I think we've got to do a good, you know, keep working at them also becoming the prime contractors on these products, projects, because the subs are local.
So, but to your point, though, the reason about it was outside of, we do have a local preference, but it was outside the threshold of even local preference. So the, the amount is a lot.
The low, yes, ma'am.
So for that reason, or looking at that, Ms. Wilson, do we know by looking at the bids, is there any particular reason why we think that the bids might have been so much higher? Is it size of the business? Or is there anything as far as, I know Mr. Rickaman mentioned about men of protege. I know at one time, you know, we had other things that we could try and support businesses. I don't know if we have any understanding as to why there was so much difference in the bids?
I don't. And I don't know that. I know Ms. Wright is not, our procurement director is not here tonight. I'm not sure that any of the other staff members who actually served on the committee for this particular project to look at the bids are here. From my understanding, just in talking to them, there was nothing really glaring. It's just the prices were a bit higher for the other bidders.
Okay. Any other questions?
I, I think this is a good example of we're trying to do the right thing. We're making a difference here. But I think it also opens up that there are some opportunities. And I think looking at our city, our needs, to make sure that we can identify local folks that we can tap and make sure that they're bidding on these type of projects. And if the price structure is so much different, that what is it? What's causing that? And to really help them so we can encourage some more growth there, I think would be great. That's the only reason I wanted to pull it out is to make sure that, you know, we use this as an example.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. No further discussion? Is there a motion on number nine?
So moved.
Second.
It's been probably moved by Mr. Rickaman, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vaughn?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, pro tem. We are very excited to present our only presentation tonight, a recognition of Ms. Victoria Riles as the 2019 Employee of the Year. Mr. Robert Anderson, Public Works Director, and Ms. Marley Drum will come forward to make the, our Animal Services Superintendent will come forward to make the presentation.
Thank you. So most of us every day that we, that we work for a city or a business we work in, we're all the time working on making our citizens happy and our employees happy. Our Employee of the Year has one extra step. And she has to make sure all the animals have a healthy home and a happy home. So, so she's got an added difficulty that, to do this. So Victoria takes her job in a very serious manner. She, each day she comes to work, she's thinking about what's happening next, whether it's kitten season or puppy season, and how many foster homes are we going to need? And how do we get people into the foster homes? Or how do we get the Foster Home Network together to talk about it? Or how do we get the supplies going? So we all know, a lot of this goes on behind the scenes. But as we work towards the mayor and councils' programs of a no-kill shelter, that's what we really focus on. So, you know, our live release rate right now is about 74%. At our peak, we took about 15,000 animals into our shelter a year. Last year, we only took about 6,500 in. So if our, our intakes are going down and our live release rate is going up, that tells me that our Employee of the Year, along with Animal Services, is doing their job each and every day. We will continue those numbers, it looks like. We will continue to make sure those numbers work. That's what makes Victoria the perfect model of Employee of the Year for the City of Columbia. She is striving to do everything we can. So with that, I'd like to introduce the Employee of the Year, Ms. Victoria Riles.
Victoria, a lot of times when I have my, y'all are wonderful male employees come up here, I tell them they have to share their check, but you don't have to share your check. You can have it all to yourself. Congratulations. Thanks for all you do for us every day.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate this. Thank you.
And Victoria, join us with you. Madam Mayor, pro tem.
Yes, ma'am?
Okay. Consideration of bids and agreements. Item 15. Council is asked to approve Contract Amendment Number One for the Water and Sewer Line Repair Warranty Program Marketing Agreement as requested by Columbia Water, awarded to HomeServe USA Corporation as a no-cost time extension of an additional five-year term to the agreement. This firm is located in Norwalk, Connecticut.
So move.
It's been properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Duval? Yes, sir, Mr. Duval.
Members of council, mayor, pro tem, I would like to make a, an amendment to the motion that we take the agreement for proposed change, a description of the change, and change January 27, 2025 to 2022. Make it a two-year extension. And I'd like to discuss that for a few minutes.
Okay. That's a motion. You need a second to discuss it? Is there a second to this motion? Okay, it's been seconded. So it's a substitute motion, actually. It shouldn't be an amendment. It's a substitute motion. It's been seconded, so now we can discuss.
This has been a point of contention with me since I've been on council. Home Serve has been in the newspaper for the last several months. Two, at least two times, the state newspaper has done almost a full-page spread on the work of Home Serve with Dominion and the fact that Home Serve has been outlawed in the state of Utah. I think that the City of Columbia does not have any business sponsoring this insurance company that has taken over a million dollars a year in profits out of the City of Columbia for an insurance policy that provides very little coverage. The water policy costs $6.49. The sewer policy costs $10.49. The interior policy costs $11.99, which is about $30. And they are selling these policies mostly to people, with some exceptions, that don't understand what they are buying. They think the City of Columbia, because it has the city seal on it, is sponsoring this, is backing it up in that this is a requirement of the City of Columbia. It is not a requirement of the City of Columbia. And I'd like to read a couple of things out of the marketing agreement. Not sure if our council understands exactly what we are agreeing to. Like number 2.1, which says in this marketing agreement that we are agreeing to have at least five acquisitions mailing per household per year of the product marketing materials. And then further, we're at least six other mailings per year for product marketing using the utility trademarks. And that's what they're doing. They're sending the marks out with the City of Columbia seal, the City of Water trademarks on it. And people think it's coming from the City of Columbia. I think that the city, if we, if we think this is a good policy for the citizens of Columbia, we have the wherewithal to operate this as a city project. Even if we contracted it out locally, at least we would keep the money here locally instead of centering it to Connecticut. They are making a tremendous amount of money off people for policy that costs very little. The, the exterior water coverage, for instance, only covers the line from the city meter to your house. And in some cases, that's a very short distance. You could self-insure paying that $7 a month fee. And if you ever had a problem, you could cover it yourself. So I, I think this is unnecessary. I think this company has got such a bad reputation in many other states that the City of Columbia should not be endorsing it. I was further asked for consideration that what would happen if the state of South Carolina that has legislation before it right now decides that Home Serve cannot serve in the state of South Carolina? How does that affect our contract? I won't go into that tonight. But if, if the state legislation passes, I certainly will bring it up. But I'd like to move the previous question and reduce this to a two-year contract instead of a five.
Okay, Mr. Rickaman?
I, I support Howard's two-year. I think a two-year contract's fair. But I will say that, you know, I'm a subscriber to the service. It's $58 for the year. I signed up for it because my neighbor signed up for it and saved about $2,000 in repairs. And a lot of people I've heard from, it's been a very good service for them because what goes from the meter to your house, especially on these outside water lines, is, can be very expensive because you're having to dig up the yard. You're having to replace a lot of, of piping and other things. And it gets quite expensive. So I do think it's, it's a, a good service. And I haven't gotten any complaints about it. But I do agree with the two-year term. I think that's a fair term.
Any other comments? I just have a couple. So, Mr. Duval, a couple of things that you said in your statement. First of all, you said that they're, that, I'm sorry, what? You said that this company is selling to people who don't understand what they're buying and that this council also doesn't understand the contract that we are entering into. You are clearly calling a lot of people in this city at basically illiterate that we don't understand what we read. And so that's one issue I have, what you just said. The second one is that you, you assume that everybody can cover the costs themselves. Not everybody, not everybody has that financial ability to cover the costs themselves. As Mr. Rickaman just talked about, if someone, if I was presented with a $2,000 bill to pay for a water break, I wouldn't be able to afford it. So I think that this is an optional program. I think that this company has not done anything that we've heard complaints about, that their practices have been questionable, that they've misled anybody. And we went through an extensive vetting process prior to you coming on council saying that this was a good company. And there are other companies out there that are providing the same service that we get no benefit from. Our citizens are getting a great benefit from having this company provide the service and the partnership. So for that reason, although having a two-year contract is still good, I'm voting against the motion because I think that the five-year contract, we've already, see, we've been in, we've had it for five years already.
The Home Serve contract was, the provider was selected with a competitive qualification selection process. And we entered in contract five years ago. So the contract is up for renewal. And the agreement states a successive five-year renewal term. That's in the agreement. And that's what is proposed before you tonight, is to renew one five-year renewal. So anything short of that, I think, would have to be negotiated. So I couldn't say whether or not.
So our current agreement calls for a five-year renewal.
Has that option.
And that's what we're on here. So, but in the, but we've had it for five years. And we personally, any concerns regarding the marketing materials, and we have heard concerns about those. Those concerns have been addressed and amended. So I think we've addressed that to make sure that the, any kind of confusion that may have been out there, we've tried to address that in the changing of the marketing materials. So for that reason, I will not be supporting your motion. But I will be supporting, if his motion does not pass, I will support the original motion of the five-year extension. Mr. Duval?
Let me apologize if I made the impression that I thought that people were illiterate in the City of Columbia. I don't think they're illiterate. I think they're reading the material that specifically has the Columbia seal on it and the utility mark of the City of Columbia. And they think they're buying this from the City of Columbia. They're not buying this from the City of Columbia. But we're putting out a good reputation behind it and a company that has been taken to court in multiple states and has been taken to at least the headlines of the newspaper in this state and with legislation pending on them. So I, I stand by my argument that we should not take a long-term contract with this company.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, we've got a substitute, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Benjamin?
So, sorry, Madam Mayor, pro tem. So does amending this contract off the floor, does it fundamentally change the arrangement in some, in some way that, that, that changes all the other terms of our deals? I, I have no hesitation supporting a shorter term. I just want to make sure there are no other ramifications that aren't clear up.
I think, Mr. Mayor, to, to your question, no, sir. This, this is the city manager. It wouldn't change any of the other terms that, I, I didn't hear Mr. Duval speak of changing any other terms other than the length of, of the contract renewal. However, I think we would have to be directed to negotiate whether or not Home Serve would accept less years than the five years. So the amendment, the amended motion, the alternate motion to just do two years, it may need to be directing staff to negotiate for two-year, a two-year term. I don't think we can just change it outright, in other words.
Certainly, we can't change it outright. But we can change our end of it to say it's going to be a two-year and present that to Home Serve and see if Home Serve will buy that.
So, but our current agreement says that it was a five-year contract with five-year renewals. And so we're in the renewal period. So the original contract contemplates the renewal would be five years. If you are changing that five years to two years, you're in essence changing the original contract term. And so what they're saying is we, we can't unilaterally change that contract term. We would need to go back and negotiate the two-year renewal because the original contract contemplates a five-year renewal.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
And I would agree to that. Pass it at two and let Home Serve react.
So, so your substitute motion is to authorize staff to go back and negotiate a two-year renewal? Okay, so that's the, that's the substitute. That's the second. Any further discussion? Mr. Mayor, do you have anything further?
No. Again, I, I understand Mr. Duval's unclear concerns fairly consistently. So I knew exactly where it's coming from. But we, I just, and I can support it in essence. My, my concern is it's just dangerous to unilaterally change contractual terms on the floor when they've been previously negotiated. But I, I understand the policymakers' perspective here just in advance. So, no, nothing, nothing else. May the previous question.
All right. Ms. Hammond, I move the previous question. Clerk, read the roll. Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
No.
Mr. McDowell?
No.
Mr. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Vine?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Benjamin?
Yes.
All right, so the substitute motion passes, and that will authorize staff to move forward to negotiate with Home Serve for a shorter two-year term. Since the substitute motion passes, the first motion is not necessary.
I just, from a staff clarification, the two-week period, well, until we get to February 4th, will any contracts of citizens be, that are current, be impacted?
So the, our contract with Home Serve, the existing contract that has the five-year renewal term ends on the 27th of January, so we'll have to look at a short-term extension to get us past a negotiation period. So if y'all would give us the latitude to do that, we would be much appreciated until we'll enter. But just so we don't have any lapse in coverage for our citizens, and I think, you know, that Home Serve can continue their contractual arrangement with their exist, with our existing customers that are their existing customers. If we don't extend the contract in any way, shape, or form, we just wouldn't get the seven percent return.
Right. And I was going to say that that was our discussion when we talked about this in the work session. So if there is no agreement reached with Home Serve, they keep the customers that they currently have, we just do not get our portion that goes into helping citizens pay their water bill.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So do you need a motion for a short-term extension to get you through the negotiation period?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to allow staff a short-term extension? Do you need a time limit on that, or?
I think if we could do a sixty-day, that would probably give us plenty of time to work through. So move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Before we do any discussion, Ms. Knox, do you have something to say? Okay. Okay, so the motion is for, to allow staff a sixty-day extension on the current contract to allow them to negotiate the terms for a shorter, for a possibility of a shorter term. Is there any discussion on that?
Seeing none, the clerk read the roll. Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Protem, in light of the actions taken with item fifteen, I would suggest council hold item eighteen, as that item is also impacted by the continuance of the Home Serve program.
Okay. So we will hold number eighteen and hopefully be able to revisit that once some discussion is had.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know that we had the presentation in a work session, but as many people don't hear the work session, I think it might be also useful in a, in a meeting, maybe just have a smaller presentation, just to understand the impact that this partnership has had on our citizens, specifically the citizens that have benefited from the, number one, having the insurance policy, the optional insurance policy, as well as the citizens who have been helped by having an ability to access the funds to help them with water bills.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward to a period of resolutions. Item sixteen, resolution number R-2020001, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental support agreement between the United States Army and the City of Columbia for stray animal control services on U.S. Army Garrison Fort Jackson, South Carolina.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This is, other than I'll comment, this is really good. I'm glad to see this. If the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Item seventeen, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, didn't mean to speak over. Item seventeen, resolution number R-202006, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement for bulk order sale between the City of Columbia and Richland County for Murray Point subdivision.
Will move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Moving into a period of zoning and planning.
And we've got to wait till seven on that.
Oh, okay.
So we can move to number twenty-eight, City Council Committees.
Yes, ma'am. Moving into a period of appointments, our City Council Committees.
We've discussed this, and I believe, who has the list? Mr. Rickaman or Mr. Duval?
I would have it.
Mr. Duval, do you want to read the list of the council committees that we discussed?
I have discussed with the clerk, and she understands the changes, but for the public's benefit, let me read the assignments to committees that we have agreed on. Administrative Policy Committee will be chaired by Councilman McDowell as chair. Committee members are Sam Davis and Howard Duval. Arts and Historic Preservation Committee will be chaired by Will Brennan with council members Duval and McDowell as members. The Economic and Community Development Committee will be chaired by Councilman Davis with, Tamika Isaac Divine and Will Brennan as members. The Economic Development Subcommittee will remain as Daniel Rickaman chair, Tamika Isaac Divine and Howard Duval members. Environment and Infrastructure Committee will be chaired by Tamika Isaac Divine, and members will be Councilman Brennan and Councilman Rickaman. A Technology Committee will be chaired by Howard Duval, with the members being Tamika Isaac Divine and Daniel Rickaman. The Public Safety Committee will be chaired by Daniel Rickaman, with members Sam Davis and Councilman Ed McDowell.
All right. So is that a motion?
So move. Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Protem, in light of the actions taken with item fifteen, I would suggest council hold item eighteen, as that item is also impacted by the continuance of the Home Serve program.
Okay. So we will hold number eighteen and hopefully be able to revisit that once some discussion is had.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know that we had the presentation in a work session, but as many people don't hear the work session, I think it might be also useful in a, in a meeting, maybe just have a smaller presentation, just to understand the impact that this partnership has had on our citizens, specifically the citizens that have benefited from the, number one, having the insurance policy, the optional insurance policy, as well as the citizens who have been helped by having an ability to access the funds to help them with water bills.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward to a period of resolutions. Item sixteen, resolution number R-202001, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental support agreement between the United States Army and the City of Columbia for stray animal control services on U.S. Army Garrison Fort Jackson, South Carolina.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This is, other than I'll comment, this is really good. I'm glad to see this. If the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Moving into a period of zoning and planning.
And we've got to wait till seven on that.
Oh, okay.
So we can move to number twenty-eight, City Council Committees.
Yes, ma'am. Moving into a period of appointments, our City Council Committees.
We've discussed this, and I believe, who has the list? Mr. Rickaman or Mr. Duval?
I would have it.
Mr. Duval, do you want to read the list of the council committees that we discussed?
I have discussed with the clerk, and she understands the changes, but for the public's benefit, let me read the assignments to committees that we have agreed on. Administrative Policy Committee will be chaired by Councilman McDowell as chair. Committee members are Sam Davis and Howard Duval. Arts and Historic Preservation Committee will be chaired by Will Brennan with council members Duval and McDowell as members. The Economic Development Subcommittee will remain as Daniel Rickaman chair, Tamika Isaac Divine and Howard Duval members. Environment and Infrastructure Committee will be chaired by Tamika Isaac Divine, and members will be Councilman Brennan and Councilman Rickaman. A Technology Committee will be chaired by Howard Duval, with the members being Tamika Isaac Divine and Daniel Rickaman. The Public Safety Committee will be chaired by Daniel Rickaman, with members Sam Davis and Councilman Ed McDowell.
All right. So is that a motion?
So move. Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Next would, sorry. Next would be the appointment of Mayor Protem. And I would just say that it's been an honor to serve you guys as Mayor Protem for the last three years, and I've really enjoyed this privilege. And I would like to nominate or move the appointment of Councilman Ed McDowell for Mayor Protem for, let me finish, Mayor Protem for the 2020 year. It's been seconded by Mr. Rickaman. Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will read the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I say a word?
Yes, sir.
Let me just say a word of thanks to Ms. Divine for her leadership, all that she has helped all of us sort of navigate through some troubled waters at times. We are, we are appreciative for what you've done for us, the leadership and the skills and the wheelhouse you bring to this table, and we are appreciative. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. And then lastly, I would just say that we have an amazing mayor who is not only our mayor, but he has been the mayor nationally, and now he is the mayor internationally. But he tries his best to make sure that he's leading on the international, international level, but always here. So you've made it easy. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to serve you as Mayor Protem, and I appreciate your support always.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Tamika.
Yes.
Thank you. And you've been a wonderful Protem, and I know Ed did a fantastic job as well.
Thank you. All right. So next, we have the Parks and Rec Foundation, and I will go ahead and move the appointment, the reappointment of Sue Erwin Harper for a final term that expires December 31st of 2022, and the appointment of Lee Snellgrove and Doria King for a three-year term. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion on those? Seeing none, the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
All right. So next, we have the Parks and Rec Foundation, and I will go ahead and move the appointment, the reappointment of Sue Erwin Harper for a final term that expires December 31st of 2022, and the appointment of Lee Snellgrove and Doria King for a three-year term. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion on those? Seeing none, the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
All right. So next, we have the Parks and Rec Foundation, and I will go ahead and move the appointment, the reappointment of Sue Erwin Harper for a final term that expires December 31st of 2022, and the appointment of Lee Snellgrove and Doria King for a three-year term.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion on those? Seeing none, the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Thank you. So next, we have the Parks and Rec Foundation, and I will go ahead and move the appointment, the reappointment of Sue Erwin Harper for a final term that expires December 31st of 2022, and the appointment of Lee Snellgrove and Doria King for a three-year term.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion on those? Seeing none, the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
All right. So next, we have the Parks and Rec Foundation, and I will go ahead and move the appointment, the reappointment of Sue Erwin Harper for a final term that expires December 31st of 2022, and the appointment of Lee Snellgrove and Doria King for a three-year term.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Mr. Rickaman, seconded. Any discussion? I would just say, thank Mr. Rickaman for his leadership on getting this done, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone recognizes this is a, this is a pilot in Five Points, but this is a template that we can use citywide, and this will certainly enhance our toolbox of being able to provide economic development opportunities throughout this city. So this is really exciting, and I think that this is just really going to allow us to take this model and move it around the city. So thank you, Mr. Rickaman, and if there's no further discussion, if the clerk will read the, oh, sorry, Mr. Davis.
I'm remote, but thank, I want to thank Daniel too, but I really want to thank our staff too.
They indicated that the school district on the property across from me in the woods, and the county came out, and they say it's the city problem. The city came out, say it's the county, and then I forgot what group this was, but I got the paper, they indicated it's everybody problem. And he said, time is a little under control, but they informed me, the city and the county will be working together to come up with a solution.
Yes, ma'am, and that's what we're doing now. We're trying to work with them through that. I got it, 3115. What was your first name, Ms. Jones? Am I right?
Bertha.
Mayor Benjamin been out there. I sent pictures, and Channel 19 came out, and we sent them pictures, and they informed me that they still can't do nothing, up to the city and county. So, I'm just praying for a special blessing.
We're getting there. We're getting there.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Ashley?
Hello, Mayor Benjamin? City Council? I'm still learning about this, but I would like for y'all to hear me out. My name is Ashley Greenlaw Moore. I have been on the streets as a homeless person on and off of four years. First of all, I want to say that you say that you want to help the homeless get off the streets. Yes, we have shelters, but once they are filled, there are homeless still sleeping on the streets, and when it rains, it's hard for them to find shelter. And my main point is, why are there, I understand there are homeless people sleeping where they're not allowed because of a lot of crime, but the homeless people who sleep in those areas are not really doing anything except sleeping. As of December 16th, 2019, at 9:48 a.m., the Supreme Court refused to hear Boise's defense of its policy of sometimes prosecuting homeless people for sleeping in public areas after a law court found ordinances in Idaho's capital violated the U.S. Constitution's ban on court and unusual punishment. The justices left in place in 2008 ruling by the San Francisco-based Ninth U.S. Circuit Court of Appeal that fining or jailing homeless people for staying outside or unaltalized places if a bed is at an emergency shelter that's not available is unconstitutional. You have said that you have plans to help the homeless for years, but all we see are plans for everything else, like apartments for students and the elderly and other office buildings, and nothing for the homeless. With all the abandoned buildings that we have, instead of demolishing them and building something else, why not fix them up and charge the homeless from $300 to $500 a month for rent? That will also help the exfelons get off the streets. I know it won't be easy. There is a building on 1535 Bull Street that used to be a boarding home years ago, and that can be turned back into housing for the homeless. Many of the most successful housing-based policies designed to address the homelessness crisis, in particular, permanent supportive housing for individuals living with disabilities and other special needs were pioneered in New York City and have been replicated throughout the country. Numerous research studies have consistently confirmed that long-term housing assistance not only successfully reduces homelessness, it's also less expensive than shelter and other institutional care. Proven housing-based policies include federal housing assistance, permanent supportive housing, and Housing First. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley, and we appreciate you coming and raising this issue. It is an important issue that continues to be discussed, and we appreciate you. That is all that I have signed up. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak? Seeing none, we have got nine minutes before we can start the zoning public hearing, so we will take a nine-minute break, and we will reconvene promptly, promptly, okay, at 7:00, so that we can do the zoning public hearing.
Madam Mayor Protem, when you all reconvene, we can also, I don't think there are any referrals or committee reports. I know no committee reports, but any referrals?
No.
Ask before you.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Steve, we're gonna take a nine-minute break, okay?
Is there anything, is there anything controversial on zoning public hearing, is there?
They got deferred.
No.
Yeah, I'm gonna pass, I'm gonna step out, okay?
Okay.
I'm gonna step out, let's go have it.
Okay.
All right?
See ya.
Thank y'all.
All right, thank you.
All right. Please tell the clerk, okay? Tell her, okay?
Okay, I will. All right. Bye.